Ready to start the county council meeting June 25th. It's 9:00 a.m. Please stand and we'll recite the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay?
He's yawning already.
Yeah, I'm doing this here.
I don't blame you, buddy. We'll make it a little more exciting before you hear about it.
How's the agenda been, Tuckston?
Yes.
All those in favor of the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander.
What are we roll calling on?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Let's go. Ms. Chambers.
Present.
Ms. Lassiter.
Here.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Quayton Bush.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
I need a motion to approve amendments of May 28th.
Some of.
Second.
Moved by Jane and second by Jessica. First on the agenda of.
Roll call.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quayton Bush.
Yes.
Okay. Meanwhile, back at the ranch. Judge Dowling is asked to come and make a presentation in lieu of her scheduled question. Ask her louder or something to come first.
Thank you. You have a document in front of you that Emily prepared and handed out. And so my name is Kim Dowling, Judge Circuit Court Two. And so I want to talk to you about the Sixth Circuit Court. We've been having some discussion about it for the last year or so. What you have in front of you are the 2018 weighted caseloads for the circuit courts, one through five, and then also for Muncie City Court. And so I'll go through that in just a second. As a background to it, I just wanted to explain that from the state's perspective, they're really looking to try to absorb the city courts into the state trial courts. And that's for various reasons. Some cities and towns have elections where the person who's elected as the judge is not required to be an attorney. But I think most of all, it's because the city and town courts are not generally courts of record. Our court is not a court of record. So if someone has their trial in Muncie City Court and then wants to appeal that decision, that decision then comes over to Circuit Court Four or Circuit Court Five. And so then it's just a replay of what has already been done. That's duplicative. It's duplicative from the prosecutor's standpoint. It's duplicative from the court's perspective. And so it's just more costly. In addition to that, then the numbers that are on the document in front of you would show a justification for adding another court. From the state's perspective, again, Delaware County is now the 10th highest county in the state in terms of need for another court. And that's without absorbing the Muncie City Court cases into a circuit court. So if you look at the second column of numbers, circuit courts one through five, that lists the total number of minutes that all the cases in those courts require. And so then in the bottom section of that second column, you have the word "have." We have seven judicial officers. That includes a full-time commissioner and a full-time magistrate. We need, though, 7.89, so almost one other full judge, to be able to handle the number of cases that we have. And then if you look at the third column, that's the Muncie City Court, and they show there that they have one judge, which is really kind of misleading because you really only have half a judge over there because it's a part-time court. But they need 1.43. So they really need a full-time judge plus a half to hear all the cases that they currently have. And so the numbers show that we need to add a Sixth Circuit Court. The prosecutor is supportive of it. The bar is supportive of it. Of course, in the new building, then the commissioners have created the space for a Sixth Circuit Court. So we're going to be presenting this issue to the study council this summer for the legislature. And what they would like to have from you, if you would be willing to do it, is just a letter saying that we've presented this issue to you and that if the legislature approves it, that you acknowledge that it would have to be funded, the county part on the county level. So if you have any questions, I'm willing to try to answer those as best I can.
I do.
Okay.
Anybody else? Do I have any questions? How many counties have magistrates and master commissioners?
Almost every county has at least one of those, if not multiple, and it just depends on the size of the county.
And I've experienced this before as a county commissioner and agreed to create Delaware County Court Five. It was a county court. And the city agreed to close city court. And it happened. Then the city realized they were losing a lot of funding from fines, et cetera, so they opened up a city court again. What's preventing that from happening again?
The prosecutor doesn't have to file in the city court. And so if the prosecutor's not filing any cases in the city court, then they don't have court. They don't hear anything. And as I indicated, we've already talked with Prosecutor Hoffman, and he is supportive of this and would file his cases in the Circuit Court Six.
But you know this is a rather political town sometimes. What would happen if we had a different prosecutor?
I hadn't noticed.
If we had a different prosecutor that decided not to go ahead and, or to put cases in a city court and they recreated city court?
I tend.
It could happen. Is that correct?
I mean, I tend to play the Bobby Knight theory, which is I'm not going to play what-if. You know, there are a lot of things that could happen down the road, but you know, as I've indicated, the states are supportive of not having these city and town courts. And I would imagine, although I haven't researched it, I don't know, that the state would not approve them opening another city or town court either.
Could that be in the statute when it's passed?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Study committee?
I'd have to ask.
And I'm not using a what-if. I saw it happen.
I understand what you're saying.
It wasn't a what-if. It happened. Right here in Delaware County.
I understand, and that was before my time, so I don't know the history. I just, I know that there was one and I know that it was recreated.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I don't ask that question. I don't know.
Well, one of the commissioners agreed to allow it to happen.
Sure.
And at the time, the county court was for small claims only and eventually became a circuit court over the years.
Right.
So, you know, through the process.
Well, and I will also say the numbers show that, I mean, it was not a waste. I mean, we've already expanded beyond the number of cases that would justify that fifth court. So it wasn't a waste, but you know, I can't answer that without talking to our legislative contacts about whether we could put in the statute that Muncie City Court would not create another one.
Well, I think that should at least be addressed because that was totally misleading to those that agreed to do that. And then, and I'm sure you're aware that there are traffic fines and such that the city participates in. Now, that money would come to the county?
Everything would come to the county.
Will that be in the calculation for council look at at the time?
Yeah.
To what the additional revenue is going to be?
Yes. I mean, there's a lot of different sources that we would have to pull from. We've already tried to look at it. We've not been able, we're not successful at trying to put the numbers together for you. So I, you know, but yes, I mean, we'll provide as much information as we can pull and from all the budgets that we can pull from.
Is that because you can't get information from the city?
There, we, I'd have to ask Emily that question, but I don't think that we've tried to dig deep. We went to the clerk. We tried to get the information from the clerk about a year ago, and he didn't have access to that information. And so as Emily and I have tried to look at the different reports that she's pulled from, we just concluded that we just didn't have enough information to make it a realistic expectation that we would give you those numbers and that you could rely on them. So I just don't have anything today for you that we would be able to put any confidence in.
Well, I wasn't expecting today. I was thinking more if you get to the study committee.
Yeah. I mean, we will pull as much information as we can to put together those budget numbers. Yes.
Well, I said it. I'm not in favor of adding an additional court. I mean, I made that pretty clear.
And I get that.
And it's going to, if we do add a Sixth City Court, we're going to have to add to prosecutor's office, to the public defender's office, to all of those associated offices with it and somehow pay for that.
I get that and I understand, and I know that, you know, I didn't expect to walk in and have you all say, yeah, great, let's do it. But I am just asking you to acknowledge that if the state legislature approves the court, that you would acknowledge that it would be funded from the county perspective and then the state would pay what they have to pay.
Well, I just don't know where we would fund it from at this point, and that's kind of, again, playing the what-if game. And I think something, if we added a sixth court, what we do know is we would have to add additional staff and other departments.
Sure. You would also have revenue that would be coming into the county as well.
I would be in favor of eliminating city court.
Okay. But you can't do that without adding the Sixth Circuit Court because.
Well, you could.
There's no place for those cases to go.
That's quite a few cases.
It's a lot.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, it is a lot.
Well, the city court absorbed most of what was going through the Yorktown Court too.
They did.
Which from, not exactly told through the eyeball to eyeball, but through innuendo, that happened because the prosecutor quit filing cases in Yorktown. And there was, and I was at a Yorktown downtown meeting when they discussed the fact that they weren't creating enough revenue to even keep the doors open.
Right. I mean, you know, courts are not moneymakers. I mean, you know, nobody's going to sugarcoat this. And at the same time, you know, city court, Muncie City Court has got to be losing money as well, partially because they're running it as a part-time court, but they don't want to put the money into running it as a full-time court. And so it just becomes a snowball.
Anyone else? Someone asked for a vote here. I don't know exactly how to word it, but I'm going to need a recommendation from the council to have a letter prepared for us to submit. I'll have to ask Mr. Hughes to prepare that letter so it's properly worded. I don't know how to put it on the floor. Mr. Hughes, help me out here. When would you ideally like to have a letter?
You know, within the next 30 days, I think, would be fine. They don't have a chair for the study committee yet, so we're still waiting on that. And then once the chair is appointed, then we'll ask to be on their schedule. So.
So could it be something I could work with you on the letter and then it would be presented to the council at the next meeting?
That's okay with me.
Everybody agree?
Sure.
What we'll do.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay. We're going to go now to the transfer agenda.
You want to do transfers first? Let's do, did you finance or something?
It's fine with me. She just had transfers next to all of them. Things here.
No.
I was just reading the.
Steve's got his things in order and he's got reassessments.
Fine. Okay.
Okay.
Whatever you like to do.
We'll do reassessments. Reassessment. 111 health insurance, $220. 312, 411, $7,927. 362 computer upgrade, $371. Total request, $8,518.
Mary.
Mary made the motion.
My second.
Seconded it. Any questions?
It was a breakthrough.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quayton Bush.
Yes.
Transfer.
Thank you.
Forty court, 175 insurance, minus $750, 172 per, plus $750, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second. By Jessica, second by Scott. Now, Larry's not here, guys, so. Got to change the combination here. This was approved by finance. This was just getting enough in per to cover it. Roll call.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Quayton Bush.
Yes.
Okay, the next three, I'll go read them all if you don't care because they all kind of go together.
Fine.
191 probation officer, minus $386. 158 probation officer, plus $386. 155 chief probation officer, minus $4,731. D-189 chief probation officer, $4,731. 155 chief probation officer, minus $16,330. A-155 adult probation officer, plus $16,330. And then for your information on D-189 chief probation officer, that, that's a new name for that position? I mean, Emily will tell you all this. And A-155 is also a new name.
Move to approve.
Second. By Jessica, second by Scott. Any questions? Any comments from you and Emily?
Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. Do you want me to explain all these transfers?
I think we've discussed them pretty well. Finance, if no one has any questions, go ahead and vote on it.
Okay.
Roll call.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Quayton Bush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Clerk C-119, minus $18,388. D-119, plus $18,388. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second. Jessica.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quayton Bush.
Yes.
Election board, 315 precinct workers, minus 2,000. 311 legal services, plus 2,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second. By Jessica, second by Ryan. Any questions? Guess you had some problems, had to hire a lawyer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quayton Bush.
Yes.
The next one's really, instead of emergency management, it's EMS. B-123, minus $21,822. C-123, plus $21,822. 102, minus $14,274. A-102, plus $14,274. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second. Jessica, second by Scott.
We'll have Jason hobble up to the stand. One of my questions in the finance committee was, did you finish the game? And they said you did.
I did. Yeah. Yeah, I did.
But he wasn't playing. He was just refereeing.
Ah, yeah. I was getting on fire. I was on fire, yeah.
This is one retiring employee, correct? And another person leaving?
Correct. Our office manager of 25 years is retiring, and we had an employee leave for a higher paying job.
You know, you've shared that with me before. What kind of pay are they getting through a higher paying job?
$10,000.
So people are paying, I mean, the salaries that we see in the line items are not actually the net income to them.
Well, they're working 2,000 hours overtime.
Well, no, but I mean, plus other overtime sometimes. So your, the salary is, I guess what I'm asking you is, is what kind of a salary are these people paying that are stealing our employees? How's that fun enough?
65, 70,000.
All right. That's the answer I might be hearing. That much.
I lost another one last night.
Well, I don't know. I've got an idea for you, but probably won't work since it's my idea.
Mr. Rogers, would you say that they're also leaving for less of a run load as well?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I mean, the opportunity to make more money, have better benefits and have less of a workload exists out there. And there are municipalities. We used to be one of the high-end pay SDMF services in the state, and we've just been surpassed. And that's, I mean, our one volume increases between 5 and 15 percent every year. We have increased staff or put extra trucks on the street in years. And so we're just stagnant, and it's time to either start paying these people or we're going to continue to lose them.
Well.
I mean, I'm just, you just get what you pay for.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't know what, I know their total pay is more than what the line item shows, and I know we have.
Well, I think your base salary's 47, roughly 47,000. And after they, after they make their, after they work the extra 2,000 hours of overtime, they make about 52,000. Starting, I've got one guy that turned in his letter last night. He's starting at the Anderson Fire Department for like 65. His first day. Lost one to Zinesville. Lost one to Wells County. So next meeting, I'll have four more. And they're all paramedics.
Well, we're going to have to figure out a way to give them an incentive to stay. I mean, do all these people have that special extra pension plan that we have?
Mm-hmm.
They don't recognize that.
It's not enough.
They don't have that.
They leave, they go to police fire pension, which is roughly the same thing. Zinesville has their own 457, exactly like we have, and they, you know, the city of Parma, city of Fishers, they're solvent, so they pay nearly nothing in insurance. I can't compete with that. And me telling them they're doing a good job every day just isn't cutting it anymore.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not, but I attended the city meeting on the fire department, and I was so proud of these two gentlemen, Paul and Jason. They had answers to all the, all the questions. I was so proud that they are employees of ours. Does that situation?
I was going to say, that's why the four people that I've lost this month are all my lowest senior paramedics, and they're worried they're not going to have a job. So absolutely 100 percent, that plays into this.
And then they're also being forced to work overtime too, aren't they? I mean, they're doing 36-hour shifts at times.
Oh, absolutely.
Am I correct on that? At least that's what I've been told.
Because we don't, right now, we're, I mean, it's a revolving door, so, and it has been. You know, and I'm sure the city will use those words against me at some point, but.
That's EMS.
It is EMS. It's healthcare in general. I had a conversation with the emergency room, and they don't have, their nursing staff completely rotates once a year.
Yeah.
That's healthcare in general. That's, I mean, there's traveling nurses, traveling doctors. We're paying, we're paying a traveling doctor, I think, to work in the ER. So.
It's just, it's not just Delaware County EMS that has this problem. This problem is statewide, nationwide, as far as.
In healthcare, yes. I mean, but you have to realize, the people that are paying, the paying for the service are getting the high-quality people. I mean.
Well, except for this, EMS professionals are going to where they can make more money and take less runs. I mean, it's as simple as that. I, that's what I did.
Sure. Your share, I mean, why wouldn't you?
So.
I don't know. Certain amount of loyalty to your community and to your employer too, in this world.
Not anymore. Not anymore. I think the family dynamic comes into play there as well. You know, what's best for the family and how you can support your family. I mean, that was my justification. I can assure you of that.
I think a lot of the people in the audience are thinking loyalty doesn't pay the mortgage.
Does not, at all.
Amen. I've got two paramedics that drive from Ohio to work for us, and they're considering, I'm sure they're considering leaving because, I mean, there's a cost with that expense. They've got families over there, and they drive over here from Salina and I think it's near Eaton. And I wouldn't blame them because they'll get, they'll get over here, they'll get closer to the Indy market, and they'll, somebody will pay them $10,000 or $15,000, give them better benefits. Everyone move on? You can only build so many bridges in a day. We'll be on our capability.
How do we go EMS on the highway?
You what?
How did we get from EMS to highway?
Well, I know you like to speak of metaphors, so I was trying to speak to you.
Anybody else?
You know, years ago, it used to be our, our neighborhood was our neighborhood. I grew up in Albany. We had a grocery store, we had a drugstore, we had two car dealers. And then all of a sudden, my neighborhood is Muncie, and Delaware County shop in Muncie, and then all of a sudden, you know, it's Indianapolis. We don't think much about driving to Indianapolis to go shopping or to go to dinner now. So our neighborhood has changed. We're no longer a little neighborhood, and that's why we're getting, you know, people can drive over here for jobs and other places for jobs.
Roll call.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quayton Bush.
Yes.
Emergency management.
104, minus $15,672. A-104, plus $15,672. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Jessica, second by Ryan. Any questions? Comment? Tell them who it is.
This is our, this is our office manager. Office manager is Aunt Taylor. She retired after 25 years.
Roll call.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Quaken Bush.
Yes. I don't know that we do anything formal, but we share the best and thank her for, for long-term employment. Appreciate it.
Twenty-one years. Kathy was 25. She was 21 and she's, and she's already gone.
You don't have to send her a card, huh?
Okay, moving right along.
Sheriff 106A minus fifteen thousand, 106B plus fifteen thousand. Total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Jessica, second by Scott. Any questions? This is a new employee, someone leaving. Roll call.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Public defender, 147 minus seventeen thousand, seven forty-five, eighty-six. A147 plus seventeen thousand, seven forty-five, eighty-six. 186 attorney fees minus twenty thousand. That should say three nineteen court ordered counsel plus twenty thousand. Total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Jessica. Did you say thirty nineteen?
Three nineteen.
Oh, that's what I wrote the other day, three nineteen. Okay.
Ryan, second.
Ryan, got it, got it. You want to explain what this is to the council?
Shelley Harvey, office manager, public defender's office. We are replacing a deputy public defender. That is reason for the seventeen, seven forty-five, that's salary. Coming out of attorney fees and going into court ordered counsel, we have attorneys that we have to pay that are outside our office to take cases where there are multiple conflicts or where the, our attorneys get capped out. Our numbers are set by the state of Indiana, or our commission, the public defender commission. They're set by state. So if our attorneys get capped out and can't take any more cases, we have to contract attorneys outside of our office. So we are woefully low on funds in our contract attorney line. Like last year, we have extra in our court ordered attorney fees. So I'm gonna play a little juggling there. See how those shake out to avoid appropriation hopefully later. And then, I think I had one more. That's just, I got a call for longevity from the auditor's office, saying we were gonna be short, so I'm transferring to cover the longevity shortage. But get it done now instead later in the year.
That's the eighteen eighty-four that'll come up from the office.
Okay, questions?
I wasn't aware we had to contract outside of the public defenders.
We do. We have two contract attorneys that help us with juvenile court because we have attorneys assigned to juvenile court. But a lot of the, the Chen's cases and the termination cases have three and four attorneys involved, obviously. We have, so we have, they can't all represent the same people. We have two contract attorneys that are pretty much full-time. I mean, we pay, pay them their contract rates. And then we have had some murder cases as of yet with multiple defendants. And you have to be murder qualified to represent, there's different qualification levels for defense attorneys that are participating in the public defenders program. So we have several murder qualified attorneys in our staff, but they must, you know, every defendant has to have a different attorney. And then this defendant, you know, and this attorney have a communication breakdown. So before long, and then you've got, you know, multiple quirks, so you can't have two quirks involved with these defendants. So soon enough, you run out of attorneys to represent these co-defendants in murder cases. We have one going to trial today. And he, we're paying a contract attorney for that because the gentleman had been through four public defenders. So, so yeah, this, like, this will be a big chunk of our contract attorney when somebody tries a week-long murder case. It'll be a big chunk of our attorney, contract attorney line, so...
I found out something the other day in conversation with the prosecutor. The, the state also has a public defender agency that comes on board and defends people. And we have to defend against them.
Yes, when, when, usually it's a higher level felony like a murder case. Somebody's found guilty, they're sentenced to prison. Lo and behold, they're not happy they're in prison and they blame their attorney. So for the fact that they're in prison. So they can go to the state public defender's office who will take over and file what's called a post-conviction relief. And then it gets filed with our local court and then the judge has to just make a determination whether or not it, you know, everything was done right. And then they get to appeal that decision also. So, yeah, just because you finish a case, a lot of times your job's not done on these cases. And they don't get, our attorneys, when they have to come back, we'll have somebody there helping that attorney. But when that attorney has to, 12 years after a murder trial, come back and remember why they did something on that murder case, it's very trying on that attorney that they're under fire in a courtroom and they're having to remember facts, you know, from 12 years ago. So, yeah, our, it's not an easy, it's not an easy thing to have to deal with for our attorneys. And, you know, some of them burn out and that's why we're losing some, so...
Complicated society we live in when we have to spend this kind of money to defend people instead of spending money to save their lives. But you just heard the conversation from two different points of view. And the taxpayer pays for all of it. Roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Thank you. Sheriff Department, D110 minus two thousand, nine fifty-five, twenty-one. C110 plus two thousand, nine fifty-five, twenty-one. Total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Jane, second by Scott. Question? Roll call.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
That's easy, but...
Community corrections, 102 assistant executive director plus three thousand, five hundred dollars. 119 court and alcohol and drug case manager plus nine hundred and thirty dollars. A140 field surveillance officer minus four thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Jessica, second by Scott. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Public defender, one ninety-nine longevity plus one thousand, eight eighty-four. Three thirteen psychological testing minus one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four. Total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
By Jessica, second by Scott. Questions? Roll call.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mary, it's okay if you make a motion once in a while.
She made one earlier today.
Yeah, she made a great one.
We'd never got started.
Yeah, he was a law lawyer.
Wondered to know I hadn't forgotten.
Jail, D142 correctional officer minus seventeen thousand, five seventy-one, seventy-six. E142 plus seventeen thousand, five seventy-one, seventy-six. Total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Jessica, second by Scott. Questions? Obvious what this is. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Sheriff, B129 minus one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven, fifty. B101 sheriff plus one thousand, seven eighty-seven, fifty. B129 deputy minus one thousand, or five thousand, one oh three, fifty-one. C129 deputy plus five thousand, one oh three, fifty-one. Total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
By Jessica, second by Ryan. Question? Roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Health department, C109 environmental physician minus, or plus sixteen thousand, one oh eight, seven thirty, my goodness. Plus sixteen thousand, one oh eight, seventy-seven. B109 minus sixteen thousand, one oh eight, seventy-seven. Total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Jessica, second by Scott. Questions? Roll call.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Quaken Bush.
Yes. Jamie, would you stick around? I'd like to bring you up a little later on your lease thing.
Okay.
Lit public safety jail, one fifteen minus twenty-five thousand, seven seventy-one, seventy-six. There's a ten cent mistake, so I'm not sure which one.
I see it, yeah.
I didn't catch that the other day.
I didn't either.
A115 correctional officer plus twenty-five thousand, seven seventy-one, eighty-six. So I don't know if it's seventy-six or eighty-six.
Well, the seventy-six will have to carry because you can't put a dime extra in if you don't take it out.
Yeah, that's true, so...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Jane, second by Jessica.
Are you approving the seventy-six?
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we have. Okay, so it'll be zero?
Yes. Yes.
Any questions? This is just rotating people. Roll call.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Kimbridge, one seventy-three, takes insurance minus two thousand, five hundred. One ninety-nine longevity plus two thousand, five hundred. Total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jessica, second by Scott.
Got a note on here that it's health insurance to longevity?
Right.
Is that right? Okay.
Everybody got that? We talked about it, but I don't think it's typed in. We wrote it in. Taking money from health insurance.
And longevity.
And putting it in longevity. Correct?
Yes.
Minus health insurance plus longevity. Roll call.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Oh, great. I motion to approve transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions.
Second.
Had a tie. Hey, Ryan, who wins?
Ryan.
All righty. I guess I have a duplication there. Moving right along.
Vote on that. Roll call.
Roll call.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Committee reports, tax abatements. Have anything on that, Scott?
I don't think we do.
Appointments? I received a question on one of our appointments and Jessica's gonna follow up on that. Appointment to the animal control board. Personnel?
You were supposed to approve that job description before you approved that salary transfer.
Oh, shame on us.
Yep. That's what Pam and Cam, the human resource director, that's what I was gonna say. I think you put the cart in front of the horse. But this job description for the assistant executive director goes with Janie's position that was okayed earlier. And I sent one out to each and every one of you. I gave one to Ryan this morning.
I have one question on that. Is this a complete new job description or is this an addendum to the existing?
This is a new job description because this is for the assistant executive.
The old job will go away?
Jane Miranda, community corrections, there has never been an assistant director.
I understand that, but this person is already on the salary.
Correct. They are an existing supervisor with another program within. So this is just part-time duties in my absence.
These are in this job description. This is gonna be tagged to the, the... Sorry, recording me all of a sudden. This is gonna be tagged to the person that's assigned the responsibilities in this job. And that's the way we went through HR and they said this is the way it was needed to be done. So if that person changes, the additional pay goes away and then that's a job responsibilities, if approved, would go on to whoever, whoever takes that additional position.
That's what's so confusing because this is a new position. But it's not a full-paid position.
It's not really a position.
This is an addendum to a job description.
Is it a title change?
Well, it is a title. Well, I mean, I suppose the employee who...
Do we need to go in and change the title of this position?
Well, that's gonna be...
Well, that's, I wouldn't think so. I mean, it's just gonna depend on to the executive, to your position.
How, how we were...
What's the person called right now?
She is the supervisor for the court alcohol and drug.
So we need to change the title.
And then she would take on these duties in my absence.
So we need to change the title, right?
Well, her position doesn't change. Her position stays the same. She's gonna be labeled as...
But they're changing her title and I, I need to know what you put in the computer. Right now, she said it's called supervisor. They're asking for it to be called assistant executive director. So I need to have Becky go in and change the title of the position.
Well, is she both?
She would be both, yes.
So you're just adding to an existing line, changing the title of the position?
Change the title of that line. Cause I think it's something else right now. How we were explained, it would be kind of similar to a supervising probation officer where they get a stipend out of one line and then their salary out of a different line.
So as director, if you decided that, what will be negative a little here, but you decided this person, or maybe this person no longer wanted to do this, then you would assign this description to someone else?
Correct. We would open it back up to someone else. We have had it posted within our agency for 10 days. And there's only been one person that has submitted a letter of interest to do the duties.
Okay.
Okay, I need to ask that question because of what you just said. So line 102, there's nobody getting paid out of 102 right now?
You mean 103?
No, 102. Cause Jane just said you're gonna pay...
Yes, 25 on 1, 102. There's no one being paid out of it.
So this is a brand-new line just for the 3,500?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That's not the way I took it to start with.
Well, I wanted to clarify that because it wasn't clear in my own mind. It's kinda like the salary you vote for, for the president of the council. Whoever's the president gets that line item. So at your discretion as director, you could, for one reason or another, move this position around within the department based on who was qualified and who wanted to do it? As I wanted to...
That's our understanding.
Okay.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna change the position of the person that's in that position other than... It's not gonna change the position of the person that's in that position, other than they're gonna take on, in addition to what they already do, they're gonna take on these additional
And they're gonna get pushed off to one.
And they're gonna get paid a stipend as well. And we were, I think the Prosecutor's Office maybe, do they have somebody in there that?
I believe it was the Probation Department.
Probation, yeah, probation, okay.
Those offices.
Okay. Roll call. Roll call. Job description. Well, I have a motion, maybe.
I'll move to approve the job descriptions as presented to us today.
Second.
Second by Jane. Moved by Jessica. Any more questions? Any other questions? Roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Quaybush.
Yes.
Hey, Jane.
No ordinances today. Resolutions? Think so? Sure we got everything over here? Ed, we have you on, but I'd like to have Jamie come up first, if you don't mind. Got a little business to talk to him about. Really didn't know about it until Finance Committee. Jamie brought it to the attention of the Finance Committee and also sent me a copy of the agreement on there somewhere. With the Commissioners and the building on Mulberry. That's on a long-term lease that terminates thirty, the day of September twenty nineteen. One seventeen to one twenty-five North Mulberry Street. Jamie brought that to our attention so that we would be aware of it. Do you, would you like to make a comment or something about it?
Not necessarily, I can answer any questions.
Okay, he's here to answer questions. What I'm going to recommend to the Council is that, in this agreement, it stipulates that the Commissioners can purchase this building at the end of the lease for one dollar, and I would like for the Council to endorse the Commissioners in purchasing that building, because there's other stipulations in there that continue that lease on. And I think if they lose, the Council was, at the time, told that we would own the building at the end of the lease. Some of us didn't agree with the lease, period. Now that it's expired, re-expiring, I would recommend that we endorse by a vote of support that Jamie can take back to the Commissioners and Council. Prefer buying the building for a dollar. How should I handle that?
Do you have a motion?
Motion that affect Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve having the Commissioners purchase that building for a dollar.
Second.
By Scott. Second by Jessica. Some of you were on Council at the time. I don't know, Mary probably. At the time, I didn't think it was a very good idea. It was a pretty expensive lease. The Health Department functions over there pretty efficiently. I had a reason to get a purse or debit or something for my brother-in-law at the time, in a hurry. And he was in California at the time, and they helped me get that to him. And I was impressed. And so they made it work, and the bottom part of the building is totally vacant. There's all kinds of possibilities for the use of that, but no one's pursued it. Maybe once they take title, they'll think more seriously about it. So I have a motion, and a second, to endorse the purchase of the property at Mulberry, one seventeen, one twenty-five. Roll call.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Quaybush.
Yes.
I'll ask you, Mr. Hughes, do you think it would be proper for us to have you send a letter to the Commissioners on our behalf?
Yeah, I'll do so.
Endorsing that? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Council.
Who pays the insurance on the building currently?
Health Department.
I can never get it. I'm just thinking about the money cost.
This, just as a point of information, too, it was clarified to me, I didn't quite pick up on it, but there's a an interlocal agreement with this lease between Commissioner Donati and Judy Harris, who's President of Health Board, allowing the Health Board to continue leasing that building from the Commissioners till September thirtieth of two thousand and thirty-two. I don't know what value that has, it's of record. That'd be between the Commissioners and the Health Board. Okay, now, Mr. Ed Carroll would like to speak on county tax sale, correct?
Good morning. Ed Carroll, Delaware County Treasurer. I want to give you an update on the deed sale we recently had in April. We consider it a very big success with the results we actually received out of that. So we actually had between four and five hundred people attend that sale. And that's much higher than the regular sales we have. We normally have about two hundred people attend those, so it's more than double the number of people attended. And same goes with the number of bidders. In this case, we had two hundred and seven. In some cases, we've had as low as eighty bidders on previous sales. So this type of sale has brought in a lot more bidders and people attending the sale. And the average sell price on these were actually higher than the normal sale. So these factors, along with the rest of these variables here, actually proved to be a much better sell and much better results than we anticipated. The big concern when we went into this is how much was it gonna cost the county, and we actually came out to black at the end. And our concern was if we were actually gonna be at the red. So I think we actually ended up with probably over a hundred thousand dollars, on top of the fact that our annual tax collections will be back on taxable, almost thirty-five thousand dollars a year, just from this tax alone. Now, in July, we plan to have another one, and we anticipate this being as the other one, the first one we had. So we did have a collaborative effort between the Elder's Office, the Treasurer's Office, the County Attorney, S.R., which is the contractor that did the auction, and also Judge Cannon, to get the process, every single deed before the selling. So at this point, I'll look for any questions.
This is the first deed sale we had?
This is the first deed sale we had, that's correct.
I meant it's a new Indiana statute, or?
No, it's been news is all relative, I guess. It's been on the books for a while. These properties, some of these properties have been on the tax sales for ten years, and we can never get rid of them. But the deed sale, it made much easier Our Elder's Office and myself went around to a lot of neighborhood association meetings, real estate association meetings, presented what the deed sale was and what to expect. I think that's part of what drove the sales up, along with the activity. There's a lot of people concerned about the time it takes to actually receive a deed after you do first date, piece of real estate. And the cost after the fact is much higher. In this case, you get the deed to may a possession once what you pay the price to get the deed, so it did make a big difference.
Can you explain just real quickly, you don't have to go into great detail, but just how this sale differed as far as the ownership of the property goes from the ones that we've done in the past?
Well, yeah. Typically, on a treasurer's sale, you have to wait twelve months before you actually receive the deed. And essentially, the auction takes place, the bidder, the highest bidder receives a lien against the property. So the property, or the highest bidder doesn't actually get the property until twelve months after the auction. And that's assuming that the property owner doesn't redeem the property by paying the past due taxes. So you can go vacant for twelve months, and you never know what shape the property is, is in. The Commissioner's sale is somewhat similar, it's a shorter period of time. We're talking six months to a year. The deed sale, you actually receive the property, may a possession once you receive the deed. So once it goes to the courts, we have the option. It took us a long, there's time, because we're still ironing out the process of what you went through to process all the deeds. But once they receive the deed, there's nothing for them to wait. And that was one of the most attractive things we heard from the neighborhood associations and the real estate association, that a may of possession was a direct factor in people attending this and taking advantage of buying these parcels.
Thank you.
Under the old procedure, you only received a either a quitclaim or a Commissioner's deed, and then you had to go through a process of acquiring title suit, which was expensive?
Yeah, that cost typically is around twenty-two, twenty-three hundred dollars, plus it takes another depending, it could take months to actually
Over ten, sometimes I did one that took five years.
Yeah, it's quite expensive, you have to notify all the possible lien holders, adjacent property owners. The advertising cost is over a thousand dollars, plus attorney fees, so it's very lengthy and very expensive. And if you put any money into this piece of property, you do have the potential of losing it, because it could go back to the original property owner, so it just, this speeds up the process of having those properties redeveloped and investment taking place of help committee.
I didn't do it for myself, I was a real estate broker at the time, and I represented a client who had bought the property and just came to me to help him get it cleared, and it was quite an experience, it was a learning experience, really, and I learned a lot. What happens? Are you sorting out? I know what little experience I've had with this, there is, there are properties that literally aren't usable, either greenfield, or contaminated, or landlocked. How are you identifying notes so that they don't just keep rolling over?
Well, it is a very lengthy process. On the front end, that's part of what we did with the Elder's Office. We actually looked at the I.D.A.M. list of contaminated, possible properties that are contaminated. The Department of Health, concerned with any house for health reasons. Those are all set aside to look at when to sell or not. And then we have a committee that actually sits down and reviews each one of those. So this process actually started in October, it didn't have to sell until April. So there's a lot of hours invested in making sure these properties are good for sale. And we started off with over five hundred, and we actually only presented three hundred and twenty-one before possible sale.
Is there any solution to those unsellable properties?
There is, we've talked to the County Attorney about it, and his recommendations, recommendations to give notice at the sale that these potential properties would be sold again, and that there's possible contamination issues, possibly U.P.A. issues. So at least the potential buyer is aware of what they're investing in, so in this particular sale, we will be selling those type of parcels.
And I have a question, how did you publicize this sale?
Like I said, we went to neighborhood associations, we also ran an ad in the Great Deals. It was on the radio. We also passed out flyers to a lot of church groups, et cetera. So we did a lot of things. I think I saw this on social media as well. Yeah. So I mean, it's highly published. On the county Facebook page.
Between the ease of obviously this process and then having that so out there for the public to see, and maybe both of those things helped to get those high attendance numbers.
Right.
That's awesome.
Anyone else have a or may I request a question, Mr. Carroll?
Well, I know that they did a lot of work up front, Melanie Marshall, Delaware County Recorder, but I am going to give kudos to the staff in the Recorder's Office. We recorded a hundred and forty-one deeds the first time, transferring them into the Commissioner's name, and two days later, we recorded a hundred and forty-two deeds, transferring them into the new owner's names. So, and our staff handled that effortlessly.
Well, I tell you, when I was Treasurer, we hadn't had a tax sale for many years, and Donna will probably remember, Joyce and I stood at the counter and sold them. Judge Lendington was there, and he threw a couple guys out, and, oh my gosh, it's gone a long way since that day. It's a very professional process now.
Yeah, we encourage everyone to stop by, at least experience it, see it, if you don't want to participate. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right on. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak today? Oh, Molly, I'm sorry. Extension office, sorry.
Molly Hunt, Purdue Extension. And so before we have our presentation, I'm just gonna give a real short update. Our assistants here from the 4H, Teens as Teachers, are passing out a copy of our monthly report that I've been sending electronically, but I wanted to hand-deliver today. I'll also mail, email, and electronic copy as well, along with a flyer for a program that will be hosted in July about adolescent substance abuse. I also just wanted to take a brief moment and introduce our newest staff member, Lindsay Cox. So Lindsay joins the Purdue Extension team as our new Community Wellness Coordinator. She brings with her a wealth of experience from the Minatrista and Farmland Main Street Organization. Lindsay will be focusing on policy system and environmental change for Delaware County, making the healthiest choice the easiest choice for all of our county residents. So without further ado, I'm gonna introduce Ashley Breelich, Cody Breelich, Caroline Brumley, and Pam Breelich, who serves as the Junior Leader Advisor, Mentor, and Champion. I'm sure it will come as no surprise to the Council, as we have spent many months discussing jail construction, additional courts, juvenile courts, contract attorneys, that many young people are not being given the opportunity to learn skills such as tenacity, strategic thinking, communication, and the people skills that they'll need to lead now and in the future. But we do know that 4H has a proven record of growing true leaders for our future. So by a quick survey, would the Council and also the audience raise your hand if either you participated in 4H or you have a youth or child that participated in 4H? Thank you. Part of this is we wanted to thank the Council for your continued and unwavering support of 4H Youth Development in Delaware County. It is truly an investment in our community's children and also our county's future. So without further ado, I'm gonna pass it off to our youth leader representatives.
Okay, I'm Caroline Brumley. I'm an eighth grader at Yorktown Middle School, and this is my fifth year at 4H. I do reading and art projects, and I've done Teens as Teachers this past year. And I've, with that, I've taught back at Westview 4H Club and shared my projects with the younger kids, and taught them about reading and art projects, and let them do their own. Yeah.
Are you related to the fellow that works down there? Brumley?
Your father, yes.
Yes, her dad.
Ron, you're going to be a little hard in here for a round of spot. Can you tell stories like your father does?
Well...
I'm Ashley Breelidge. I am going to be a junior at Delta High School and I've been a part of 4H for as long as I could be, I guess. I participate in three projects, consumer clothing, home environment, and gift wrapping. I also attended the Teens as Teacher event. And after doing that, I was able to help at Westview and show them the gift wrapping project and allow them to try and teach them how to do it for 4H. For junior leaders, we do a lot of outreach and we've worked hard with the group to try and keep it improving. So this past year, we've introduced a communication system, like a GroupMe app, so we can all communicate because a lot of teens use their phones all of the time. So we've done that so they can be well informed. Thank you, guys.
All right, and I'm Cody Breelidge. I'm a senior, or I guess I was a senior, I just graduated from Delta High School. I'm part of the junior leaders and electric project, photography. I've done other projects, kind of dabbled throughout my time in 4H, but those are the ones that I've stuck with the most. And I have been a previous president of the junior leader program. And over my time there, it really has grown. We've done a lot more outreach. We've gotten a lot more speakers in to kind of educate our leaders so that we can continue to grow. So that's been kind of a neat experience. And then each of us, I think, as junior leaders is able to, in our own project areas, reach out and work with the younger kids and help teach them how to do the projects. So I think that's pretty neat.
Can I get you all to sign the paper on the podium, please? So I can have your correct spelling of your name.
Do I have any questions? Or am I, either myself or those, uh, you?
I'm a comment.
Imagine that.
Do you mean to say that out loud?
I'm just proud that they're here and able to tell us what they're doing, how much 4H means to them. I'm a 4H-er and I showed sheep and pigs. We had a little situation at Eaton School at the time when I was like in about the seventh or eighth grade. Found out here recently that there seemed to be some young ladies that's father was a sheep farmer and up to that time, boys showed animals and girls did cooking and stuff like that. And we did garden, I did garden one year as a boy, but the girls and the boys were separated. So a group of us boys decided that we'd like to take a baking class in 4H because these girls started showing sheep. And I found out recently that one of the girls that we were protesting against is Scott's mom. The Love Girls, we called them, that's what their last name was, Love. But I've carried that.
You didn't want to mess with those girls.
I've carried that experience throughout my life. And I don't raise sheep today and I don't raise pigs. I grow a few vegetables, but I baked the most beautiful zucchini nut bread the other day. So just think, you might be sitting in a chair right here someday. If you want to be a leader or part of your community, go wherever your destiny takes you.
I think this is the perfect time to transition into the fair coming up.
Well, for transitioning into the fair, I'm Melanie Marshall, Delaware County Fair Board Member, and I want to extend a personal invitation to each and every one of you to come and join us at the fair. It starts July the 10th and runs through the 20th. The 10th is the beginning of the 4H events and activities. And I've got some programs and I've got some passes that I'll be handing out to each of you as this meeting concludes.
Anybody else in the audience?
We certainly do appreciate what the junior leaders do at the fairgrounds. They have a lot of projects out there. And do you do the 4th of July?
We have.
Are you doing it this year? Is that the auction committee?
We plan on having people out there and invitation has gone out to families to participate in the fundraising event, yes.
Okay, explain, explain to the council and the audience what that is.
So during 4th of July fireworks, um...
Go to the mic, sorry.
I've got a, my mom's a teacher, I've got a projecting voice. Thank you, okay, Molly Hunt, Purdue Extension. So during 4th of July fireworks at the high school in the parking lot, I believe it is, at the fieldhouse, our, the fairgrounds, that our families take money as donations from people parking and that money is then utilized by those families, or not the families, excuse me, by our organization for a skid loader to help fund those implements and the things that we need to make sure that the fair happens. And so it's a great fundraising event for our organization.
That's a great place to park and watch the fireworks. Donate a little money towards the use of the county.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I've got something, Ron.
Far away.
So about a week and a half ago, I had the privilege of attending the 2019 Washington Fly-In with the ECI Regional Planning District. That was my first time attending, actually, Ron, kind of encouraged all of us to go at some point as a member of the council, so I took this opportunity to go. It was a very interesting experience, it was two very, very busy days. Just to kind of put things in perspective, we flew in on a Wednesday. We had lunch, we met with the U.S. Department of Transportation, followed by the U.S. EPA, U.S. Department of Justice, and then finally had dinner. Thursday, we met with Senator Mike Braun, so he actually was in his office. We got to speak to him personally and Senator Todd Young. That meeting was pretty cool. He was very excited about the Aqua Farm up in Albany, like really excited about it. So that was kind of fun to see his energy on that. We then met with Representative Susan Brooks, actually her team. After lunch, we met with Greg Pence, Representative Greg, Representative Greg Pence's team, as well as Representative Jim Bates. Unfortunately, they were all voting, so we didn't actually get an opportunity to have face-to-face time with them that day, but it was still great to talk to their, their staff. We met with the Economic Development Administration. One of the things I also thought was really cool when we met with the Department of Transportation on Wednesday was how excited they were for the development that the Regional Planning Commission has been doing with the expansion of I-69 and trying to get more corridors in our county and going north off of that interstate. And the Department of Transportation was very pleased to see the progress the team has been making. So that was another moment that was really cool. But it was just a nice opportunity. You know, we see Brad Book out and Bill Walters come in here and present us with tax abatements and different things. And it was just really neat to really get an opportunity to see what they're doing outside of when they just come to speak to us for those abatements. So I would encourage any of the council members, if you get the opportunity and invitation to go, I would quietly encourage it, it was a really great experience.
Thank you for that.
Mr. President, I've got something as well.
Win at your own expense.
I paid my own way, yes, sir.
We had a Delaware County EMS, had a loss this month. And I would be remiss if we didn't talk about this. Jason, if you could maybe step up. We had a paramedic that passed away, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you just expound upon that a little bit? You don't have to go into detail, but how long was he with us? Let's give him a little bit of tribute here.
He was a paramedic with us for four years. And was a field training officer. He was a young guy, 27.
I tell you, it just seems like you keep getting just, just beat up. And I think our EMS professionals are continually getting beat up, locally, obviously. But I would say statewide, too. The representation is, is not there, I would say, here locally, on a state level. I hate to see it and, you know, we, we need to be a part of that change. So I truly believe, we did talk about burnout earlier, somebody did, did come up here and speak about it. 36 hours a shift is burnout to me. I've seen it, I've been in the back of that truck, 13 years. I spent a lot of time in the back of that truck. Some of it at Wishard, some of it at the EMS-based fire system on the west side of town of Indianapolis. Saw a lot, had to deal with a lot. You guys shouldn't have to be dealing with what you're dealing with right now. You should be out there for the public. Everything you're having to deal with hurts the public and quite honestly hurts the county as well. So I'm sorry for that. When I started at Wishard Health Services as an EMT, 2004, 2005, I made $23,000 a year in 12 hours doing probably 15, 15 calls, which is pretty substantial for a 12-hour shift. This is something that, this is, this is a statewide problem. It's, it's not necessarily Delaware County, but EMS has just not been represented, not represented well at all. You know, and I think it is time for, for that to change. So I, I just want to say I'm, I'm sorry for everything you guys have had to deal with. And I fully support you, no question about it, so.
Appreciate that. And I think our employees done that, too. Ryan's always been a champion for EMS and some of the things you did before you were elected, so.
Well, and a lot of that has to, because of the wrongs that were done to EMS. A lot of that, because I'm, I've become such an advocate, it's because of what I dealt with, you know, in Indianapolis. Some of the things that legislatively, whether the, you know, it's either legislatively or just within the entity I work for, EMS is severely underrepresented. And quite honestly, I get tired of it. So part of the reason I advocate so hard, you know.
Well, I think we do, too. And, you know, it's frustrating to see that, I saw a posting on social media and it talked about Delaware County being one of the few services left that's county-based in Indiana. And I had to laugh because the people that make these postings are just uneducated. First of all, there's, there's 34 counties that have county-based EMS, third-party service, right? So the ones that have fire-based EMS don't have, as an example, Madison County. They don't have Madison County EMS. So the Fire Department has to, has to do it. You know, it's not that they can do it better because they're than anybody else. And I had to laugh at this reporting that we were one of the last. If we were one of the last, that's a really, that's a slap in the face to Randall County EMS, Jay County EMS, Blackwood County EMS, Grant County EMS, I could go on, Henry County EMS. It's, we're the stepchild of...
Public safety.
Public safety.
Absolutely.
You know, and it's because we're the youngest, you know. EMS, as, as we know it, has been around for about 40 years and everybody else has been around about 200. So it's, you know, whether, what do you want to call it, growing pains? Or, you know, society, our community has said, "We want this." So we as elected officials, appointed officials, have to figure out how they get it.
And I will say this, too. I've seen, social media-wise, you know, there's been a battle with FDNY EMS versus just FDNY in general, the fire side of things. And, you know, Mayor de Blasio made the comment that, you know, he, he didn't see the justification necessarily to really just enhance the lifestyle of EMS professionals within the city because it was a different job. Myself, as a paramedic, obviously I'm not on the streets anymore. I'm more of an advocate now than anything else. That is one of the most offensive things that a politician can say. It is a different job.
Exactly.
The accountability and the liability is completely different. I have more of it. It's simple as that. So, yeah, I do get passionate about this because it is wrong. I dealt with it for 13 years in Indianapolis. It's absolutely horrid. And we're starting to see it here now, not only within the state, but, but here locally with what's going on in Muncie, too, so.
Well, you can't deny, 80% nationwide, 80% of what the fire service does is EMS. There aren't any fires anymore.
Well, I think I, there was a statistic I, I saw a while back, an NFPA statistic, I think for 2016, when you had 1.2 million fires versus 22.9 million EMS calls. Doesn't equate. The funding doesn't equate, it doesn't make any sense.
No, I'm not saying, don't, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying we don't need a fire department, we do. What I'm saying is, is you, you've got to recognize the fact that the health of our society and our community itself is in need.
I agree.
It's been a tough, it's been a tough couple weeks for us.
I'm sorry, I think it's been a tough two years. I mean, from, from what you've dealt with, from where it started to where we're at now, it's been a tough two years and I'm getting tired of it. I really am. I'm getting tired of seeing my local entity getting beat down for just clocking in and coming to work. I'm tired of it.
So are our police.
I, I know, I'm sorry, but, yes, absolutely.
On a lighter note, Association of Counties has a conference in September. And I have talked to Bill Walters about submitting Delaware County as an outstanding county in the state. I think we have, I think we have the fish farm, I think we have a lot of things that, that, that give us the right to apply for that. And I'm getting tired of seeing Hamilton County and Boone County and Johnson County and all of the doughnut counties around Indianapolis get recognition for what they have done. So I hope we can put together something to present to the, to the Association of Indiana Counties that Delaware County is on the move and some recognition. Also, I'm kind of a sock watcher and Ms. Brumley has another pair of socks at home, just like she has on. And Mr. Ballard wins the prize for the most colorful.
I'll take it.
I'm going to say just one thing about EMS. I've been involved in EMS for 38 of those 40 years Jason's talking about. In 1980, it was a big political issue as to whether we would have paramedics in Delaware County. And I ran on a ticket, a county commissioner, in support of paramedics. And by the end of my first two years in office, we had paramedics on the street. I'm, I'm not so sure, Ryan, that our, our service is as downtrodden as you may feel. I think the people that have had need of our service are quite appreciative of it and...
I didn't say that.
Well, you've sort of insinuated that they've been picked on a lot, or...
They have.
I don't remember your words.
They have.
But I...
Absolutely, they have.
I'm not into social media and Facebook and all that stuff. And I, I don't believe in a lot, a lot of solid citizens are either. We as a council, as long as I've been on and as county commissioners and commissioners that followed, because EMS was brand new when I came in office, it was two years old. It started in this county in a borrowed ambulance. And the chief deputy of the Sheriff's Department was the first director, if you want to call it, of EMS. And that was in 1978, '79. And the council has done their very best to support EMS. We, we built new buildings, bought the state-of-the-art equipment, tried to pay good salaries... EMS. We built new buildings, bought the state-of-the-art equipment, tried to pay good salaries, as Jason said. At one time, we were the highest, higher-paid staff in the state. We haven't kept up, but part of the reason we haven't kept up is the economy and the circuit breaker tax. And we haven't kept up a lot of places for that reason, but we're getting closer. But I'm proud of what we have here in Delaware County. And the naysayers can say all they want, but those people who come to work every day, I'm sure are proud of what they do also. And can't say much more. I do have a couple of other things to bring up today under the president's comments. State legislature has changed the way that community and mental health is funded. A new formula reminds me that the local tax rate has a half a million-plus dollars going to comprehensive mental health that I don't believe we get a lot of results from. And we have any one member of any board in local government, either commissioner or council or anyone else, health department that sits on that board of directors. And yet the state legislature mandates that the auditor write them a check every year for, well, it was close to $600,000 now.
Yeah, I can't remember.
And the other thing, I have a question of the auditor, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Steve, but I wondered how you're coming with this new bookkeeping system and how we're going to work that out.
We're working on it. Hopefully, we get it done for nothing. We're working on it.
But it's budget time. If we need to put something in there for that, I want to make sure you, from my point of view, I understand that that's something we have to face and we should put something in the budget for it if we're going to need it. I mean, our...
Our finance system has the capabilities in it. So we've had probably a half dozen conference calls and meetings about what we're going to try to do with it. I'll have more by the July meeting.
Okay. Well, I just want to, I haven't talked to any of the other council members about this, but it's on my mind and it has been. And I haven't had a chance to talk to you about it either. And I think it's good if any other council member wants to say anything. I support whatever you need to do. It doesn't have a choice. The state's mandating that we go to a accrual system. Is that what it's called?
DAP report.
It's more of a bookkeeping system to coincide with what a business would do if they were going to the bank to borrow money. It won't make county government run any smoother or give us any economic savings or anything of that nature. It's just in case someone down the road wants to float a bond issue or something, the people that are buying the bonds will be able to see our quote-unquote net worth in a different format. Is that a good way to say it?
They might be talking about it at your meeting Saturday. I can't remember. That's only a...
Didn't see it on there, huh?
I'm surprised because every meeting we've been to, that's what we talk about.
Well, my concern is, is it's budget time and if we need to get something in there in the budget, either his or somebody, we ought to do it. Okay?
Yes.
Anybody else? And I will apologize. Paul Robinson got something, kind of got me in a funk here. I went to the doctor and it came out anything wrong with me, but feeling kind of woozy. And I had to pull over and let my wife drive me home the other day, so I'm getting there, but it's kind of weird.
I just, I would just like everybody to keep former Commissioner St. Mary's in her thoughts and prayers.
Okay, see you.
For the passing of Raki, she was a volunteer with the fair board and she's going to be missed.
I didn't know that.
She don't buy the paper, right?
I don't buy the paper. Yeah, him and I have been friends while he was a commissioner. Worked together.
Very soon.
He worked on the Ball State Police Force Chronicle here too. No, I'm sorry to hear that. But I appreciate you bringing it up. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
I vote.
Second.
All those papers say aye?
Aye.
Both say aye.